Okay, welcome all. This is a work session of Monday, February 27th. We're here to talk about three things. First would be the safety issues associated with Pecosin Avenue around the schools. Second would be the speed limit. We're in receipt of a petition from the residents of Ren's Road. We'll talk about speed limit on Ren's Road and then an unrelated discussion or related discussion to golf cart use within the city limits. So Randy, how would you like to go through these?
I propose we do them in order.
Okay.
The first is a follow-up to a conversation and presentation that the council received about a month ago from citizens who had specific concerns pertaining to pedestrian safety in the area of the middle school. At that time, we were asked to look at three principal questions and come back, and we've done that. I'd like to thank Ellen who took the lead on that, but she was assisted by Kevin, Tom, Cliff, Judy, and a bunch of other people as well. I'll very quickly go through and sort of frame the discussion and then look to Ellen to sort of add additional explanation to a couple of items and then we'll open it up for your questions and direction. That's all right. The first question we were asked to examine, and Bob, if you could, put up the graphic of the map of the area. Kevin did this. It really does help frame the conversation. Maybe Kevin will put it up. And a copy of the graphic is in your package. The first question was whether or not we could expand the distance out from the middle school, the flashing lights for the school or the designation of the school zone. And what we found is that the current state standards and federal standards are that school zones should be placed no further out than 600 feet from the property. And you see the points in the center of each circle. The middle school's on the left, the elementary school's on the right. And we took the, in the case of the middle school, the easternmost point, and with the with the elementary school, the westernmost, excuse me, I got that reversed, western east respectively, and plotted out the 600-foot mark. And you'll see, Kevin was able to plot the location of our existing signs within those circles. You'll see on the eastern side near the elementary school that we're right on that 600 feet. On the western side, by the middle school, we have approximately 30 feet or so that we could push it out further, but it wouldn't push out beyond the 600-foot arc, would not take us past the intersection. You recall the incident that the gentleman spoke to you about was on Pecosin Avenue, somewhere on that graphic in the approximate location of the O or the N. We didn't stop there. We will talk with you about some suggestions we do have that we think will significantly increase the awareness of people traveling through the area that in fact it is a school zone. We addressed both schools because of their close proximity in a second. I will ask Ellen to walk us through that. The other question, the second question we were asked was what was the physical cost of installing a crosswalk, the kind of the thermoplastic on the ground, not specifically in the staff report, but the cost of installing a crosswalk, including eradication of an existing crosswalk if we were doing one over, something less than $1,000 per incident for both eradication and reinstallation. But that question was asked in the framework of could we install a crosswalk essentially, if you look at the map, north of the intersection of Little Florida and Pecosin Avenue, a short distance from there, maybe expanding the existing sidewalk maybe by one lot. And Ellen went through and found the state standards for crosswalks, and she'll explain those in a minute, but the short answer is in order to get the amount of site distance that is recommended by the VDOT standard, we'd have to go up not one, but several properties, and the cost of that would be would be significant. It wouldn't just be sidewalks, it'd be drainage improvements and other things. But I believe that the things that Ellen will go over in a minute, which are bullets in bullet form on page two of the staff report, I think are things that we can do. We can do them relatively quickly, relatively inexpensively, and I think they will show a significant improvement. Before I ask Ellen to talk, one other item just to bring to your attention, it's noted in the last page of the staff report, and the report itself is included as an attachment to the report. Last month, the city received from VDOT the pedestrian safety/sidewalk study, which was the next step from the submission of the sidewalk grant that the city submitted a couple of years ago. I think it was two years ago, it could have been a year and a half ago. And that report has a number of segments that it deals with, one of which, this particular segment, is denoted as Segment C in that report. And it does have some bearing on this area. There are cost estimates, and there are suggestions for how we might want to proceed. I'm sure Mr. Green, who met along with, he and I met with representative from VDOT last week, may want to elaborate further, but the very short answer that we heard on any sidewalk improvement was in order to position ourselves for a successful grant application, we'll need to complete at our expense the property ownership investigation, meaning understand exactly where our rights of way are, where we own property. In addition, we would need to advance the project, whether likely just be a segment of the of the study, all the way through to pre-engineering also at our expense. We're further told that if we did those things and got in the queue in this cycle, which officially kicks off in October, the earliest that we could anticipate any money through a grant that that his office covered, Mr. Stephen Reed, the earliest we could expect that if we had done those other things would be construction money in fiscal year 2015. I think this is relevant because I think the report has some things we should really think about, but also I think it's relevant because the things that we're talking about now, that Ellen will describe in a moment, are things that we can do right now. Waiting on a possible grant is years away, and we know there are some issues that we'd like to address sooner than that. And with that, I'd like to ask Ellen to walk through her specific recommendations on page two.
One thing we found when we looked, investigated the school zone limits and expanding the school zone, Tom and I went out and actually drove the site several times. And the first thing you noticed as you're coming eastward along Little Florida Road or Pecosin Avenue toward the school zone is the school, the speed limit, the flashing school zone sign that we have out there now. The first thing we can see about that is it's kind of partially blocked by a utility pole. Also, it's not the fluorescent green color that the new VDOT standards call for. So one of the first things that was really obvious as we looked out there was that we could replace, we could move that school zone sign on the westerly side of the middle school, make it more visible, and just basically make drivers more aware of it. Now, the other thing we noticed is while we can't expand the school zone past the intersection and still be within that 600 linear foot limit, what we can do is put some advanced warning signs. Typically, as you're driving and there's going to be a reduction in speed limit, you're going to see warning signs ahead of time. So what we're talking about is school zone ahead, 300 feet, arrows pointing you to the direction you can go. And if you look at Kevin's diagram, you'll see there's several locations where we can install more or install these school advanced warning assemblies, or what the signs are called. And you'll see them along Leyden Way, Little Florida, Pecosin Avenue, Poplar Road, also on Pecosin Avenue, east of the elementary school, and even between the two schools. One thing we noticed as we drove is that if you were unfamiliar with the area and you drove past one school, you would logically think you were out of the school zone area without realizing another school was coming right in front of you. If, even if you're familiar with the area, if we installed a second flashing light, one in each direction between the school zones, and put some warning signs, you know, elementary school ahead, middle school ahead, it would raise driver awareness. The other advantage that we would have by placing these advanced warning signs before the Pecosin Avenue, Little Florida, Leyden Way intersection area is people, drivers would likely be more vigilant and pay attention as they entered that intersection, as that is a place where we know we have problems. That may help serve a secondary purpose as well as telling people about the school zone. So those are the school zone, the signs that we were talking about. Not horribly cheap, but not as expensive, obviously, as some of the other options. Probably the cost would be around $8,000 for all those signs. Kevin's actually been talking to Hampton and we, and other localities, and we may be able to get a U sign. So those are the, that's the sign option. The other question we were asked was about the intersection or installing a crosswalk very close to the intersection of Pecosin Avenue and Little Florida Road. The standard with a crosswalk is that you must be able to install it following VDOT or Federal Highway Administration standards, or you're better off not installing it at all. The reason for that is crosswalks imply that this is a safe place to enter the roadway. And if you don't have proper site distance, if your intersection doesn't meet safety standards, you're basically inviting people to enter the roadway at a place that may not really be the safest place for them to enter. There have been studies done by the Federal Highway Administration that say that people actually are less vigilant and there are more accidents in crosswalks that are substandard than if there had been no crosswalk there at all and people had remained more vigilant and used their own common sense in deciding where to cross the road or whether or not to cross the road. So when we look at the Pecosin Avenue, Little Florida area, we see two things going on. We have a, an intersection that is older, was built before the population, and the city grew so much, and doesn't have right angles. So it's not really meeting the safety standards we need to put a crosswalk at the intersection. The center island doesn't really give appropriate or a good enough area for pedestrians to wait and sit if they find themselves blocked by traffic. So that means we're looking at a mid-block crossing area. Instead of putting it at the intersection, we want to put it far enough away from the intersection to make sure it's safe. So the first question is can we just extend the sidewalk a little bit and just basically have it run through one property and put a crosswalk there? Because one of the other guidelines with crosswalks is you have to have a sidewalk on both sides of the street connecting the crosswalk. Basically, in order to get the the VDOT required site distance, you have to go up several properties, which we discussed, to between 940, 942 Pecosin Avenue. And you can see the yellow crosswalk sign. That would be about where the crosswalk would be required. The pedestrian accident that we talked about or that was brought up at a recent council meeting actually occurred farther away from the intersection with more site distance than where VDOT minimum stands for the crosswalk indicated. So given what was going on at that morning, the crosswalk, had a crosswalk been there, it wouldn't necessarily have been any safer. Just it was more a matter of what was going on with the traffic that morning and what decisions were made by the people in the area. Okay. And I think those are the three issues.
I think so. So Mr. Freeman, what we would propose to do is to move forward with the items that are listed in bullet form on page two that are within our budget. We think we can get them done fairly quickly. One other thing that we are also looking at is doing some potential road painting, actually paint across the road, you know, something like school zone ahead or something like that in addition to what was there. We've got enough resources to do it, and it is within our capability to do. But with that, that concludes the things we were asked to report on, and we're pleased to take any direction the council may wish to provide or to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah. Did you say seven or $8,000 for those signs?
Yeah, what we're doing is we're having to wire the flashing school zone signs. We're going to have to install them, the price of the concrete, and if you look, there's actually a fair amount of signs.
Okay, so there are electrified signs with flashing lights?
Some are.
Three of the signs are electrified, and the rest are basically pole-mounted in a combination of three signs. The school zone placard with a school zone with a distance underneath and an arrow showing, you know, if you're on the side street, that up to the right or left, there's going to be a school sign.
Could you determine if we did that sidewalk, that piece of sidewalk? You said it was like 350 feet? I think I remember that number.
I think it was 230.
We have to extend it about 230.
If we did that, were you able to determine if that was in the right of way?
No, we didn't look at any of the deeds or figure out how far out of the right of way we would have to be. So, or if we would have to require more right of way, we probably would, would be my guess, but.
That's the outlined area on the map you're talking about.
Yeah.
In that area, there'd be at least two telephone poles that have, would have to be relocated. And according to where the poles are situated there, I would say usually the poles are pretty much close to that right, that property line. So they would actually, yeah, they'd actually have to go back, you know, a few feet. So I do think the answer to that question would be yes, buddy.
And you recall the question we were asked to come back on was whether or not we could extend it one property. So we just, the answer to that is no. We've given you the other. If you'd like us to explore this further, we could, but I imagine our cost will be six figures.
Do we do any kind of safety program at the middle school? I mean, do you have officers go down and talk to them about, you know, traffic safety, that kind of stuff?
We certainly can do that, Mr. Freeman.
Well, I'm just curious if we did, because people that age, county, you get to figure it somewhat invincible anyhow.
Let me mention something that that's more appropriate for the school system to do this, but there are very few areas, residential areas, where it's appropriate, particularly for young children, to try to walk to school. We just don't have that kind of access to them. That's why school buses have been provided in areas a lot closer than the requirement from the state. There's a certain distance that you have to provide buses, but it's always been a tradition that the buses are as close as they need to be to keep youngsters in, you know, safe as they get to school. I remember the, excuse me, the fellow who was here said, you know, his son didn't want to ride a bus. Buses are provided for student safety, and it needs to be encouraged, particularly at the young level, that they take advantage of that and get on the bus, get there, and be safe. That's why it probably costs a little more in gasoline and wear and tear on buses to make those short stops, but it's there for student safety. And that's why we need to try to encourage through the school system, every youngster to get on the bus if they're not being taken there by their parents, so that they're safe and not put in harm's way accidentally or just by carelessness.
I think you see more walkers on the eastern side of the Pecosin Avenue, coming up from, you know, down by the Ridge Road, Messick, and Magnolia, and that area that are coming towards either the Mickey School or the middle school and trying to cross somewhere down there, and I don't know where they cross.
In front of the fire station usually. There is a crosswalk there that's, where is there a crosswalk there?
Park Street in the curve.
No, no, not the Park Street. But it's, we cross when we go right in front of the elementary school. I think there's a crosswalk there, lines.
There's an intersection with the school heavens, you can cross there, but, and there is a sidewalk that does, on the other side of the street that comes out the way.
Kevin has actually shown it. You can see the new fire station. If you look at the yellow shaded circle, you'll see a divin sign.
There is a cross.
That's where the crosswalk is.
That's where my kids cross.
Fire station.
And I, for what it's worth, I respectfully disagree with Dr. Vernal. I, I think that kids need to be able to cross the street, and, and I think that our society overprotects nowadays. I'm very much a free-range type of a parent, and all three of my boys walked to the elementary school for years. And we, they had lessons. I walked them there, you know, so I think, I think I'm in agreement with Councilman Freeman, who said, you know, we need to educate them. And I did that for my kids, but, you know, maybe there aren't a lot of kids having how to cross the street lessons. I don't know.
All right, trying to move through this, what I would say is that we all are in agreement that the markings of the school zones are relatively aged. Okay, they've been there since I went to school. I don't think those markings have changed. Not that I'm old or anything, but I think what staff has provided here is a pretty solid approach to raising awareness, and it's within the budget, and it's quick to get on the ground. So I think that we can make these improvements within the budget numbers that we've already got, and we can supplement that with, I think, two directions, which is one, police maybe go and present some safety classes for the students, but the other side of that is on the enforcement side. And that doesn't have to be anything, it could be passive enforcement with the, with speed limit signs or whatever, or it could be active enforcement. I'll leave that up to the, the chief's expertise, but I do believe that even when school's not in, that the speed limits that are attained in that area can be excessive. And so I think that, from my opinion, that's where we should go. And then if we want to consider extending that sidewalk a little further and putting something else, that could be considered a Plan B or something that we can look at and at least get a price on doing, and seeing if that's where we want to go. Buddy, do you have any comments on, you know, does this fit within the realm of anything that was in the sidewalk study?
Well, yes. The sidewalk study, I'll be, my personal comment was a bit disappointing. I think a lot of us and Randy were anticipating that when they said they were going to do preliminary design, that there would be some type of preliminary design, but there was none. The cross-sections they show clearly would not work in the deeper ditches. They did not answer the questions that we specifically asked them, and that was will the grant money pay for the engineering? And preliminary engineering, which it was explained to Randy and I by Steve from VDOT, preliminary engineering means you get it to the point that you know where the sidewalk's going to go, you know if a ditch has to be piped, you know where your right of way is. So it's pretty much just about ready to go. The only thing left to do is to design the cross-section of the sidewalk, how it's going to slope in different areas, and special things that would have to take place at some of the areas. Now, what the, what the report did do was did a good job of separating, separating it into segments. They call Segment A just west of White House Circle, which is where the sidewalk that was done with, in conjunction with the wide end of Wit Creek Road, where that sidewalk ends now, to Odd Road. That was Section A. B was from Odd Road to Little Florida and Leyden Way. C would be from Leyden Way down to the fire station, number one. Then they added a section, D, which nobody had ever talked about, but that would take it from Pecosin Avenue down Odd Road to the high school. Now, they did prioritize the sections, which I think we would agree with. C being the section from Leyden Way to the fire station takes into account this section from the middle school down to Leyden Way. Now, it doesn't do any, the price, the cost estimate they gave had nothing to do with correcting the intersection at Leyden Way. And it was still an iffy thing as to how you would have crosswalks there, but they did suggest new signs and sidewalk, crosswalk signs that are bright green with an arrow pointing down, so you know exactly where it is. And then the other section after that would be B, which was Odd Road to Little Florida Road.
Okay. Neither one of those were the, the extension of the sidewalk on Pecosin Avenue that we were just discussing?
Yes, yes, yes. The C section would actually encompass that intersection. And then B would take it from there to the high school. Now, the, the key to all this is what Randy said, there's no money available until fiscal year 2015. Everything has been spent, so there's no chance of a grant on any of these suggested grant options. They will not pay for the preliminary engineering, which they estimate at a cost of about $190,000 for all four sections. Each section varied a little bit. Some of them were, they estimated 30-some thousand, some of them 50,000. But the grant will not cover that part of it. Also, in their cost estimates, they did not include inspection fees, which can range from 10 to 15 percent. Did not include the final design cost, so you'd have to add that to the grant. It did not include right-of-way acquisition. It did not include storm drainage installation, which we know in some cases to keep the sidewalk in the right of way, there's going to have to be storm drain. But the grant will cover these, it's just that you've got to have it in the grant request prior to submitting it, because Steve was quite adamant about the fact that they're getting really tight with all the requests for additional funds after. They think they've got one funded, and then all of a sudden they come back and say, oop, we need twice as much money.
Right.
So the preliminary engineering has got to pretty much specify, everything's got to be done so you can request the right amount of money. But also, their estimates do not include any contingency costs. Now, their whole estimate for just the construction phase was right at $2 million. So a $500,000 grant isn't going to get us to hold 1.6 miles plus the little piece on Odd Road. It would, and I think Randy and I both agreed that it should be broken up into the segments they suggested, starting with the middle school. But until we know exactly where the right of way is and do the preliminary engineering, we're not going to know how much to ask for.
Okay, thanks, Buddy. The one thing, I was looking at Segment C in the, in the diagram here, and it does, it does not appear, maybe I'm just reading this wrong, it doesn't appear that it has anything to do with extending the sidewalk that we just talked about up to a more safe location to do the crosswalk. And that's.
No, it just gets it to the intersection.
Just gets it to the, and I agree.
Have to go into B to get it up to.
You'd have to go into B.
What the study recommended was an alternative to putting the sidewalk off Pecosin Avenue and having a mid-block cross, crossing. They were talking about upgrading the intersection at Pecosin Avenue in Little Florida. They had a series of stopgap measures until the intersection was straightened out that were going to be pretty costly, but what they would do is basically make the intersection safer than it is now for pedestrians.
But they did suggest a crosswalk into that island, get rid of the boat and have a stacking point, so they're violating their own rule.
Well, they were expanding the island too. I mean, they have a series of steps there.
Were they making a, a traffic circle?
They did, they did reference a traffic circle.
Traffic circles are not conducive to pedestrian traffic.
Gotcha.
The recommendation said we should study the traffic circle, but the intersection treatment, it's a substantially different version of the current interchange with lessening of the radii, paving in between. It's a fairly complex thing, but if I could, Mr. Green, just add a couple of points. One thing is for certain, if we're going to get to a successful grant application, we are going to need to move forward to do the right-of-way identification. That's something we'll need to do with our own resources, so we know that that's something we need to do. The other thing that was clear, Mr. Reed made it clear, is that the rule The other thing that was clear, Mr. Reed made it clear, is that the rules that VDOT is using in making its decisions have changed over time. The, the requirements for right-of-way and all the way through pre-engineering didn't exist when this process was begun by the, by the sidewalk committee a few years ago. The rules have changed substantially, in part due to, um, tightening of the amount of money that they have available, and also this, um, this habit of some projects to be substantially over budget because they hadn't thought it all the way through before they started. So they've added some new requirements, and I'll just note one more time that in order to be ready, we'll need to identify the property, and we'll have to know specifically what we want to do and where we want to do on a property-by-properity basis in order to, to be in position to get that construction grant. And all that is to say that I think that everything that staff has proposed as a, at least this first effort, nothing is in conflict with that report. And to the extent that signs may need to be moved or something in the future, that's a relatively simple thing, but I do think it's a good start. And when we're ready to spend some more money to advance it further, staff is ready to, to work with you to do that.
What do you think, counsel?
I'd like to say a couple of things. I think that putting up signs, well, is well-intentioned and something that we can do. I frankly don't think that that's going to be a big help. I don't know that it's a smart use of money, although I wouldn't vote against it. I, I just, in my own common sense, I don't think signs are going to make a whole lot of difference. The flashing 20 might be helpful. I was also wondering, have we considered, can we put in rumble strips to physically slow down the cars that reminds them? That would be my inclination of what would, um, be helpful on the side roads, not, not so much Pecoson Avenue, but the, well, actually, that is Pecoson Avenue, isn't it?
I think the, uh, added enforcement could do the same thing as-
They enforce it very well already, I'll tell you that. I pass by a car, a police car four days out of five.
We were there today, in fact.
Agreed. So, you know, I, I kind of see that as the, the thing. There's a lot of traffic. Uh, I'd hate to think that I had to drive to work every day down Pecoson Avenue.
Over speed bumps.
Over speed bumps. I mean-
Well, I think, I think what she's saying is the rumble strips, not speed bumps.
Yeah, not speed bumps.
The ones like, uh, I don't know.
The ancient roads.
Yeah, I don't know the nearest-
Yeah, the one on the side of the interstate.
It feels like your teeth are rattling out if you're going too fast.
Oh, they can make a song out of it nowadays. Haven't you seen that?
I, I did-
But now, there are people that drive up and down that road more when the school is not in session than when the school is in session.
That's true.
So if school's in session about, what, 7 over 24, whatever percent that'd be, and we need a permanent something or another like speed bumps or rumble strips, you know, for the rest of that time.
It would be, they speed that, the rest of that time. I mean, it's a, people speed there regularly, but, and that's why whenever it's enforced, I'm sure they, you get somebody every time you've got a car there.
Well, I want to, everything that we're talking about, none of it affects the sight of the accident.
Right.
Okay? Uh, except for going and doing the, the training part in the school. So I think that, you know, what staff has provided here is a logical approach with increased signage. Just the change in signage will, will, um, change behavior, uh, at least for a short period of time. And then, yeah, like I said, I, I just think we ought to go ahead and move forward with what staff's recommended, and if we have other things that we would like to consider in the longer term that have additional costs, then we do that. But-
I think everybody's become complacent to the existing signs.
And they're old.
I think if you bring those up to date, it will be a glaring reminder that you're in a school zone.
Yep. So are we all okay with staff proceeding as they've recommended?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief, with your existing staff, how feasible would it be to put a crossing guard there just at the hours schools in and out?
I just can't guarantee we'd have somebody there every day.
The school paid for one a number of years ago during, uh, at the elementary school.
Yeah. We had, you know, one domestic call, one accident, we'd be off, and then we've accepted some level of liability, I'm afraid, and I believe that's Mr. Moore to comment, but I'm afraid that because we were there, we would accept some kind of liability by leaving and going on to a hot call, if you will.
And at a middle school, elementary school, I make a sit, but I kind of agree with, Councilwoman Crawford, at a middle school, we ought to have more responsibility than the government doing it for you.
The kids should be able to cross the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll, we'll proceed with that and, and be mindful that this is not the final solution, but it is a step, hopefully, in the right direction.
I think it's a step, and we measure, try and measure some of the results, and then we say, what else do we need to do?
All right. We shall proceed that way. Mr. Jones, the ball is now officially in your court.
Are you done yet?
The session of the, uh, the training class.
Come up with the training.
I appreciate that. The, um, the other work session pertains, and I'll, I'll do like I did, uh, in previous session, I will introduce the issue, and then in this case, I'll let Judy walk us through the staff report that she prepared. Like on the first one, she was assisted by lots of people, to include Ellen and also Chief Bowen. The, the basic question is to discuss the petition that we recently received, asking that the city council consider reducing the speed limit on Pecoson, excuse me, on Rens Road from 35 to 25. You may recall, the city code gives the city manager in most areas the ability, following an engineering study, to make changes to the speed limit. However, there are certain roads that are specifically included in the code of a city that are set by the council, Rens Road being one of them. So this is in, this is firmly and solely in your court as a decision that you can make, and Judy's going to walk you through some more details on that. There are two other questions as you go through that I would ask you to, for keeping your mind. At least for some of the folks that are interested in the speed limit reduction, they are also interested in the designation of Rens Road for golf carts. There are city, the city code sections that pertain to designating roads for golf carts and the requirements for golf carts and the operations of golf carts, also included in your staff report. If you, the third question, I really call it question two and a half when I refer to it, is if you follow the thinking where the city council might reduce the speed limit and then designate Rens Road as a golf cart road, unless you live on Rens Road, you can't get your golf cart there without going on another road. So the question is, if you're going to, to turn into a golf cart designated area, which additional roads would you want to designate for that? Again, your city code has the findings that you need to make to make a designation. I would say one more thing before I ask Judy to walk you through her memo, and that is, when this idea of the golf carts first came up, I began to research it, and every single person that I talked to, their interpretation of what the council's intention was some years ago when you created the golf cart ordinance was that you had designated all the roads 25 miles an hour or less. I've read that ordinance, I see in the staff report that that was certainly alluded to. The ordinance per se, the specific language says that you can do it if you make the following findings, and then there's a next following section which says, when you designate a road, it needs to follow certain criteria. The, the city attorney and I both agree that none of that language in and of itself designated a road. So if you were going to do this, you would need to consider a ordinance to reduce the speed limit and a separate ordinance with separate findings that would designate one or more roads that met your criteria in the ordinance as golf cart routes. Judy was asked to, to look into a number of questions that some of you had, and I'd like, if it's all right, let her go through that briefly and ask her any questions that you may have.
Before we do that, could I address what you just said? Because I specifically remember going round and round and round about the golf carts. And it was specifically said, we didn't want to get into the business of designating this road and that road, and then somebody comes up and says, oh, you left my road off. So we said, any road that has 25 miles per hour, you can operate your golf cart. Bottom line. Now, how the ball got dropped, I don't know, but that is what was said.
That was exactly what I thought, but I was, uh, read today that that ain't the case.
I would 100% agree with you. That was the intention of the council, and the staff report alluded to it, but there is nothing in the ordinance that you passed that did that.
I think we need to get that straight, and that'll take care of designated roads.
Well-
Except we need to designate some of the 35 mile per hour roads as well.
No, we can't do that. We made it against the law. Well, I'm going to quit quoting that law because I've been wrong all day. I thought we made it against the law for a golf cart to be on anything other than a 25 mile per hour road.
Anything other than a 25 mile per hour road.
Right.
However we did it, uh, or didn't do it, so we didn't close the loop, I, I would say that we didn't close the loop. And if we want to consider that separately, but the, the petition we received was first about lowering the speed limit, so we should address lowering the speed limit, and then I think counsel needs to do a little bit more thought as to, uh, the rules of engagement for golf carts, even though the rule, the roads are 25 miles an hour. So think about every road that's 25 miles an hour, and we need to do a whole lot better job than we have of educating the, the, uh, citizens about the rules of engagement for driving a golf cart on a public street. Uh, 'cause I haven't seen one to date that meets the requirements, and that would be that they have the tractor sign on the back, the slow-moving vehicle sign on the back, that they have the lights, and that they have a card of insurance for up to $300,000, that that vehicle is actually insured with the liability coverage. So I want to make sure that we don't set our citizens up, especially on major collector streets, uh, with all kinds of traffic, that we're also mixing in a lot of golf carts, and we set ourselves up for situations that I consider to be, could be worse than the accident we had near the middle school. But let's, let's engage on this in order, which is, we have the petition on lowering the speed limit, and let's go at that one first. All right?
Uh, the petition that was presented to you all had actually 95, um, signatures on that petition. Um, a lot, most of them were on Rens Road. There were 45 of those 95 that were actually residents who lived on Rens Road, and the remainder were on the feeder roads, the second largest number coming off of White House Drive.
Do we know about how many residents there are in that area total?
I did have that, I've got that here. It looked like when they were figuring, I think you have to have 51% of the residents there. Um, one of the handles I had had all of the addresses there.
Well, you don't have to be exact. I mean, it's well over 50 or just nearly.
Yeah, it had to be, yeah. And they, they met that percentage.
Of the, I'm sorry, is it the number of houses percentage or number of people percentage?
I am thinking it would be households.
Okay. So two signatures on one household would, would count as one for that number? Okay.
Yeah, and it looked like they had, uh, they had 137 total here. They needed 69 households is what they had on their listing, and they met that by having 95.
Barely double the requirement.
As I went through, uh, the, the petition and looked at what was required for changing the speed on, um, on a roadway, as Randy told you, we're bound by the city code as well as the state code on how you can reduce the speed limit. And it does require an engineering or traffic study be performed to determine the safety issues on that road and what, why you would even want to reduce that speed limit. What's not clear is what they mean by an engineering and a, or a traffic study. We don't know if that just means a civil engineer could give you that report or actually a consulting firm. But we did check with Kublin's Consulting, who has done all of our traffic studies in the past, to see if we had this traffic study performed, what would be her estimate to do that just on the Rens Road area. If you recall, she did the one for us recently on pasture road.
On Brown's Neck.
Yes. Uh, and the estimated cost to do this would be between $3,500 and $5,000, and that would depend on how much information the police chief could provide, uh, I guess, on the numbers of cars and all going through there.
Let me ask you a question on that. The, you're saying we have to have an engineering study is, I know, and I know that that's a city code. Is it the city code based on the fact that the Virginia code tells us?
Yes.
Okay.
They both tell you.
So it's not our decision to change that code?
No.
Okay.
It's actually, uh, the state code requirement as well. Uh, I broke it down, and I had a lot of questions that came up as we were looking at the petition and some of the facts I have presented here. We checked with the police chief on, um, the number of accidents that we've had on Rens Road, um, to see if there's any safety issues that are glaring already that we need to address. His records show that in the past 26 months, there have been no accidents on Rens Road, so that would indicate that probably the speed is not excessive, or there's no reason, no safety issue there at this time. What type of road is Rens Road? Because that has, I guess, a determination of the amount of cars coming in and out of there, whether they're coming off of side streets, whether they're coming from off of other streets. We did determine that the classification that was in the report has been changed. Ellen, if you'd like to report on what the difference is, it has been classified as a local street instead of a collector's street.
And actually, Kevin found the VDOT map that classified all the roads. Um, so, I don't know if you-
There are only a handful of streets that are classified, um, as higher-capacity streets in Pecoson. Rens Road's not one of them, so they're thrown into this, uh, pool of 65 to 80% of all roads in the city and considered a local road. It doesn't see the traffic counts that would qualify it as the next, uh, class up, which would be a collector's street. So with that being said, uh, as far as VDOT and the Federal Highway Administration's concerned, it's no different than most residential streets in the city.
So if it's a residential street, do we still need a traffic study to make it 25?
Yeah, I believe so according to city code.
Cause it's listed in our ordinance, it's specifically named that the speed limit shall be 35, and the code states that in order to reduce that down, you would have to have that study. It's stated in the city code as, as well. The city manager, only council can change that part.
I can't change this one.
Based on that study.
I dare say, you could get a traffic study to say whatever you want it to say, depends on who's paying the bill. It's no scientific solution, it's, it's about like soils engineering. It's about as unscientific as you can get. It's arbitrary and, it's subjective. And I would think if it's, if determined a local residential street, I've always thought the residential street should be 25 miles an hour. I mean, I've lived on Rens Road for 35 years, gone to work and back from work when I was working. And that road has changed tremendously. When I moved there, there were hardly any houses on the left-hand side of the road as you go towards the marina. There was no such thing as Paradise Point, Phillips Cove. The only thing at the end of Rens Road was the marina, and at that time, an active dock, active fish dock. So it probably had more traffic then than it does now, but we've added Phillips Cove, Paradise Point, all the lots on Rens Road on the left-hand side are now full except for Carmine's property, and that will probably never have a house on it. Maybe, maybe when his grandkids get old enough, but, but I can't imagine that with that many people that want that- But I can't imagine that with that many people that want that speed limit changed, and a reference is made to what other streets are like it, Emes, pasture, they're both 25 miles an hour. Emes is 25 from Yorktown Road to its very end. But that road's got curb and gutter.
I don't think anybody's arguing whether we want to, if everybody on the street wants to lower it, I don't think, I'm not hearing any argument, but what you're presenting here is basically more reason to call it an arterial road because you're saying it's grown by several different neighborhoods, and I don't think that a traffic study, if it's a state requirement, that the local council's gonna get around it. If we gotta do it, we'll spend the $30,000 and do it.
Thirty, $3,500.
Okay. We'll do the $3,500 and do it. I don't see that as a barrier. I'm just wondering, I mean, are we trying to get this up tomorrow?
But can our own engineer give us the traffic study?
Well, we don't have the software. I'm not quite sure what's involved with that, so I'd have to do more research into what VDOT requires, if I can even find what VDOT requires. I mean.
We've been trying to.
Coming from ground zero, $3,500 is a good investment, you know?
Didn't we do, when we were looking at the intersection improvements there with Ren's and Pecosin Avenue some couple of years ago, didn't they do a traffic study on that whole thing?
There's a traffic study that's kind of in the back of all this stuff, right? That's attached in the back, right?
Right.
And it doesn't address changing the speed limit, to my knowledge.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a traffic study, though, right?
Huh?
Yeah, it is a traffic study.
It's a traffic study. Do you have to have one that says, lower it?
We got one.
The state code is silent on the particulars of the study. We have been trying to find out.
Or whether we even have to follow the advice of the study?
It simply says, after consideration of a traffic study. I believe it was.
It actually says, traffic investigation, which means you have to, you have to look into certain matters and actually come up with traffic counts. You have to get a character in the quality of the roadway, which is its width, its distance, the ground, what it's made up of, its stopping distance if you slam on the brakes at 25 miles an hour. Those are the kinds of things you have to, you have to do, because it talks about, but it's an investigation. You literally have to look into it. You just can't eyeball.
Well, I think that traffic study had, traffic count.
It has traffic counts. Page three.
Well, in any case, we're talking about lowering the speed limit instead of increasing it, so any braking distances that might apply would be less than already exist, right?
Again, I have no problem if we all just want to sort of wing it, but why wouldn't we just follow the state code and go pay our $3,500 like we have for other roads and get it done? I mean, why, why try and just worm your way through it? Why not just do it right?
Don't tell me you can focus off the school. I want to spend $3,500.
Are we afraid that the study would say something different? I mean, I guess we can tell them what we want the study for. You know, we want the study to tell us to lower the speed limit at 25, but let's at least do due diligence.
I think it's a waste of money.
Yeah, I just think it wastes money with our budget like it is if we don't absolutely have to. Could we ask somebody if the traffic study was?
And if the existing study would suffice.
But if they use, if they do a study and it says, suggests it stays the same, that doesn't.
Then what do we do?
Compu has to go with it? Compu would still say, we want 25. As long as we had the study done on the road, we can just go ahead and change the speed limit.
Well, if I remember correctly, the pasture road study kind of walked right down the fence, said it could stay the same or it could be lowered.
Can we change it?
But you paid whatever money to get it.
And all I'm suggesting is that we do the same thing for this one.
Yeah, I agree.
Again, we, you know, we do due diligence. Hey, nobody likes to spend money on anything, but we spent it on pasture road. Why isn't Ren's Road worth it?
I don't know why you can't use the same study.
Do we have a list of the specific criteria that that study has to touch?
No, that doesn't exist.
See whether we could eliminate some parts of it that we've already got and thereby reduce the cost of it.
That's the whole problem. It doesn't, that, there is no list.
There's no conversation about that.
So let's just say we did it, because we did, on August of '06.
I would suggest that maybe Ellen or I could call Eric Stringfield, who's the transportation, planning and land use representative for VDOT for our city, and see if he can provide us some direction on that. I've spoken to him once this week already, and we call Eric and see what he says.
That'd be good.
So is that what we want to do? Have the chief contact them, so, or do we want to proceed with the study, or do we want to just say, put it on the agenda unless lowered the speed limit? Which one does council want to do? Because nobody here is opposed to lowering the speed limit that I've heard.
I'd say put it on the agenda then, and have the answer to make sure.
Anybody questions it, we say, hey, we've got a traffic study right here, 2006.
I don't disagree with you at all.
Wayne, your thoughts?
Get the traffic study done.
Thank you.
Did.
It did, 2006.
August of '06.
This traffic study was not done for the purpose of considering state of the road and your consideration for changing it to 25 miles an hour. That's not the purpose of the study. So I'm not going to advise you to take an ill-advised step and leave yourself potentially open to liability by not doing a traffic study that the state statute says that you should have conducted.
I thought the reason we did this was for traffic safety, to see if we had to widen the road or do whatever shoulders and stuff was the only reason we did the traffic study anyway. I thought, but I was wrong on that other.
Does it speak that?
I think we could move faster if we just go do it the right way. And, I mean, look, I'm not trying to be hard to get along with whatsoever, and I'm not trying to waste money, but I am trying to follow state law. And I do want the council and the city of Pecosin to be above the board, and I don't want to just start winging it because we don't agree with state law. If we don't agree with state law, we change state law. Until then, we follow state law.
Agreed, but if the law is.
So let's go get the traffic study done for the purpose, exactly like we did for pasture road, and move on, and get the speed limit lowered. If that's what we want to do, fine, but let's do it the right way.
And because we do have this, what, five, six-year-old traffic study, maybe the person would be willing to take the data off of this and do it cheaper than what you estimated since it was recently done. And maybe we can get an update instead of whatever the money is, oil price.
That is possible.
It'd also be that the state has some administrative criteria as to how you perform a traffic study purely for the purpose of determining reduction in speed. It may be an abbreviated type of study. I don't know what the state has away of regulations. It's certainly not spelled out in the code. We all looked in the code, tried to find some guidance as to exactly what that study had to contain, but that we didn't find.
The fact that we don't know isn't because we haven't been looking. We just haven't found it.
There's nothing out there.
That's correct.
Probably in a policy manual or in an engineer's handbook, and we may be surprised at what it comes back and tells us.
So Cliff is gonna get that answer then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You're gonna get the answer, or are you gonna go do the traffic study?
I don't think we should do a traffic study unless we absolutely have to, and I don't think we have.
All right. Going around. If Cliff finds the answer out is, you know, we don't have to do anything, that's fine. If not, who wants to go with the traffic study? If the answer's negative, you have to have one. And I want to, if we get that word, it needs to be in writing from the state of Virginia on their letterhead.
Yeah, I think my question, I was gonna ask him, was what the administrative criteria was.
Right.
I don't know that that one, because the time involved in the study, you're gonna see traffic counts increase when the restaurant opens, assuming, so you're not gonna have the latest data. That's just me as a layman speaking to you.
I think that's part of what this study was all about. Not only the restaurant, but the condominiums, which is not gonna be there. And it refers to VHB, their study, and this JMT or whoever it is study. It refers to both of them, and they've got both of them's numbers, and they're very close to each other. So, you know, I would hope that we would ask, can we use this 2006 study?
And then if they say no, what would it take for a refresher or update at a greatly reduced cost possibly?
All right. So Randy, I'm hearing the consensus of council is to go ask that question and bring us back the price of another study at a future date.
We will go as fast as we can.
Okay.
Are you, are we clear, Randy?
I think what we're, we're, good, good point. Let me restate to make sure that we get this right. We're to take the 2006 traffic study and present that to VDOT and say, is this sufficient? The council being positioned to make a determination of the speed limit on Ren's Road? If the answer is no, then we ask, if the answer is yes, then we report that back, and this becomes a future agenda. If the answer is no, then we're to follow up and say, okay, well, what specifically then do we need to provide other than this in order to meet the requirement of the state code?
And at the same time, get a, bring back a cost if you could, an updated cost for that.
With the specific intention stated that we would like to lower the speed limit, because what we're doing is a safe thing and moving speeds in a slower direction, which is, you know, common sense. Excuse me.
Understood. Ellen? Cliff? You have your answer?
We have it.
And get it in writing.
In writing, from then.
Okay. That was fun. Hardest discussion I've ever had for everybody that agrees that the speed limit needs to be lowered. Okay. Next one is golf carts, right?
Yeah. And I thought that golf cart was gonna take off on, after we decided what to do about the speed limit on Ren's Road since.
Well, that's okay. I mean, because the golf carts are a different subject altogether.
Yeah. And as you said earlier, when we adopted the previous ordinance, we thought we were making all 25 mile an hour streets in Pecosin accessible for golf carts. And we've determined in this research here that we actually need that study on every one of those streets if we're gonna let golf carts ride on them. So there are a lot of facts about golf carts. In order for you to ride a golf cart on any public highway, you have to have, it has to be designated by city council, so you'd have to go through and designate street by street which ones you would allow the golf carts to be used on. And you would have to authorize it by adopting an ordinance with those specific streets. Same things would apply. You would consider the speed, volume, and character of the motor vehicle traffic using those roadways as you're using the golf carts. The golf cart has to, on that roadway, you have to make sure that the golf cart use is compatible with state and local transportation plans and consistent with the Commonwealth statewide pedestrian policy, which I included in your information here. The roadway may not be designated for golf cart use if it's going to impede the safe and efficient flow of traffic, so the use of that golf cart on that cannot slow down or cause any safety issues. And you must maintain signage on that roadway. So if you designate that for your own reasons, then you pay the cost of putting those signs up and maintaining them. But suppose you had a group comes forward, and they want it just for their area, and so we're gonna put the signages up for them, then these homeowners could be required to pay the cost of putting the sign up. That would be a council decision. But in no way would the Transportation Board pay for us to put signage up on the highways. And the only exception for golf carts to be used on a 35 mile an hour street would be if it's a Department of Recreation vehicle doing within their property, and our Parks and Recreation, if they're doing maintenance on parks facilities, they can be on a 35 mile an hour street. The limitations on the golf carts, they can be operated on designated streets that are posted with a 25 mile an hour or less speed limit. In our ordinance that we now have, we designate that they cannot cross over a 35 mile an hour roadway, but the law changed this July that says they can cross over a 35 mile an hour crossway or roadway if it has a stoplight there, or if it's signaled, controlled by a signal. They must, the operators of that golf cart must have a valid driver's license. It must have the slow-moving emblem on the back of it. It cannot be operated after sunset unless it has the lighting that is required by the state code on it. And of course, one of the requirements is they can cross over the roadway to a golf course, but since we don't have golf courses, that's not gonna apply to us. I've already told you about, our local government can use it to be doing our government work. And depending on the make, model, and size of the motor of the golf cart, they can travel anywhere from 15 to 20 miles per hour, and some of them can actually go faster than that. So you've got to consider the speed that these golf carts could be traveling on these roadways, interacting with your traffic going in both directions.
You said normally 15?
15 to 20, but they can go faster. They're actually considered to be low-speed vehicles in your state code. I think I told you our ordinance that we adopted requires a liability insurance coverage of not less than $300,000 per accident, and without that coverage, they have to get a self-insured certificate from the commissioner of the Department of Motor Vehicles. If they have an accident on the golf cart, there's a police investigation, just as if you have a traffic accident with your vehicle, and that would be, the liability for that accident would be determined by the police department in the investigation. They have to abide by all the traffic control signs and signals, and they're even subject to the DUI regulation, so any liability issues could be settled in a court of, a civil court. We, US City Council, can impose any other restrictions that you want on the use of the golf carts. We asked the question of the police chief, if you are out riding about and you see a golf cart, actually, what will you look for? One of, I think the most prominent thing would be, is it being recklessly driven? The number of people that might be on that golf cart might be the first sign that would make you want to stop them, but then you would check to make sure they have their valid driver's license. They would have to make sure they have their insurance card on them. They would have to have the emblem on the back of that golf cart, proof that they have, that they're not driving under the influence, if that's suspected. So it's not just a matter of riding down the road and thinking that you can have fun. As you see, sometimes people riding around, just young people riding around, some on the back of the, in the back seats having fun. It actually needs to be an adult with valid driver's licenses. Some of the concerns that we've had expressed regarding golf carts was if we lowered the speed limit on Ren's Road for safety reasons, would we want to allow the golf cart on the roadway? And other roads that you might want to consider as well, and we felt like those needed to be addressed if we have the study done, that we can look at those issues to see if by reducing the speed limit on Ren's Road, we would still want to have golf carts on Ren's Road or any other road in the city. Is it a safe thing to do, considering the traffic? I was looking at another report today on golf cart accidents, because for some reason today that went through my mind. It has increased significantly over the last. today that went through my mind. It has increased significantly over the last 10 years. Golf cart accidents rose 132% during a 17-year study. 30% of the golf cart accidents involve children under 16. A lot of them, the causes of those accidents was the golf cart actually turning over. People actually, I can see this of a child, 10 or 12, my grandchildren, for example, jumping off of the golf cart while it's moving, being silly and funny and thinking they can, they're never going to get hurt. They actually collide with other vehicles on the road. Somebody could run into them. They could run into someone else. They could actually be hit by another golf cart. They don't stop very easily. They don't have a very good braking system. And the rear, as I was talking about, people riding in the rear back seats. I've ridden on them before, and I'm hanging on. Passengers can actually be ejected from that backseat very, very easily. So when we're looking at whether we want to even allow it, we need to think of the seriousness of how they're operated and that they need adults need to be aware of the seriousness and not letting young people just take the golf carts out and having a fun time with them. So that was just something I thought was very interesting to just to throw out there.
What were you saying about the signage? That was a new one on me. The signage on the road? We have to put signs up on the roads where we allow it, or somebody does? Is that what I heard?
The, what, the signage? Let me go back to that so I can...
Is it kind of like the school crossing signs, like a green sign that says, hey, this is a golf cart authorized area?
You designate an area for operation of golf carts. You must maintain all signage on the roadway. I guess you're saying that that roadway is designated as a golf cart. And in some areas, it was noted that some places will actually put golf cart edges on the side of the road, actually just for golf cart usage.
Okay.
Outside the road area.
Didn't someplace in there refer to the fact that to operate one, you have to, on a public street, you have to have a valid driver's license? That would preclude...
Kids get...
Right, yeah. Well, you would hope.
30%, yeah.
You would hope.
Is that sign...
Would the signage, the responsibility of the city or of the residents of the street?
Was that something the state, is that the state...
I think the state was saying it's not their responsibility.
State, state's responsibility.
But it had to be there.
Are they saying you have to have signage?
Because it must maintain all signage.
Right.
When you said we're discussing this on television, when you read off all those regulations, there was one that jumped out that people often hear, that should just work to affect, you did, we department, they can go as fast as 35 miles per hour, some of the customers, but for operation on the general road, they should close to the general speed limit.
I think that part of what you said was, if you're operating on the road, you have to follow the same rules as anybody else. If the road is posted at 25, that's what you need to do. And you've got to have a license, and you've got to act responsibly. You've got to stop at stop signs. Can't drink and drive. You've got to make sure that your other passengers are under control in the vehicle, just like you would a normal vehicle. It's not a dragway, and...
That's my concern.
To answer Mr. Green's question, what the state law says is that the city has been authorized the operation of golf carts and utility vehicles shall be responsible for the installation and continuing maintenance of any signs pertaining to the operation of golf carts on a utility vehicle. In other words, if there's a sign put up that's not maintained by the state, it must be maintained by the government. But it doesn't say that you have to install a sign, but they do have to be maintained as part of the...
If we go back and correct what we all thought we'd done before, can we say that a golf cart can operate on any street with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less?
Let me address that. Number one, if there is any misconception about this ordinance, it's my responsibility for not having explained. Here is the way it works. State law gives the city the authority to establish a golf cart ordinance, and that's all I do. I establish the right for the city to have a golf cart operation in accordance with state law. And this ordinance sets the criteria for doing that. We never went through the criteria to designate any street as a golf cart street. Because in order to do that, there are things that the city council had to specifically look at to say, this is a suitable street, and you have to do it street by street. You cannot say every 25 mile an hour street is okay for a golf cart, because that's not what the state law says. The state law says you must determine that it's a street that's safe to operate on the golf cart on, it won't impede traffic. You have to go through the findings, and we never went through the findings. Now, I never thought that you wanted to go through the findings. So I may have failed to communicate, and I take the responsibility that I didn't communicate that to you. But I've never had any misconception that we ever approved one single street in the city to operate a golf cart on. What I put in place was the mechanism to let it happen. So maybe I, let's say, maybe I didn't explain it very well to council, and that's my fault.
I didn't even know there was findings that we would have had to have gone through. So that's probably my fault.
Specifically, what the state law, all we did was take the state law that says we could, we can have an ordinance, and we track that ordinance, and we followed what UPMU's had done, and I forgot, I looked at two cities that had done it, and we basically paralleled what they did. But we didn't take step two to analyze any particular streets to say you could have a golf cart on that street.
And again, this analysis comes with a price tag. We can't just come and sense it.
Well, yeah, it doesn't require us, a traffic study.
A traffic study, okay.
No, it doesn't require that.
Requires a consideration and a determination.
Right.
Tells you what the things you have to consider, and then you have to make a determination, and you have to put your approval.
And you have to be, and the big thing is that we, you know, in section 78, 203, where it says, "No public street of the city shall be designated for use by golf carts if such golf cart operations will impede the safe and efficient flow of motor vehicle traffic, or if the street's posted speed limit is greater than 25." And so we also are responsible for making sure that we don't set people up in, quote, "unsafe areas," that we're willing to stand by those positions. So that, we do need to do some due diligence. And, but I, like the rest of you, you know, I'm not going to tell you that I didn't think this was already a done deal. But now that we know this, we need to move and hopefully by summertime here, by spring, we can get it straight as far as which roads we definitely agree and at least get them going, while we do due diligence on the others. But it is some work for council to do, and we need to make it, do it the right way again, because I think we just kind of rushed through it.
First, we need to know what the laundry list is of things that we've got to designate.
It's right there.
It's in your, it's in your cut section.
It says you have to consider the speed, volume, and character of the motor vehicle traffic using that highway, and then two, make a determination that golf cart or utility vehicle operation on that particular highway is compatible with state local transportation plans and consistent with the Commonwealth statewide pedestrian policy as outlined in 33.1.
You can do that for anybody.
So we need to put together, we need to put together a checklist of what it is that we need to consider. And I don't think it's going to be, again, I don't think it's going to be very difficult, but it is a step that we need to take.
I've got one question, which is exactly what the teacher said. It says that 26 months with zero accidents on that road.
Well, Ren's Road.
So people in that neighborhood can drive their golf cart down to the dinner rather than walking or biking or driving a real car?
Yeah, but I'm thinking $5 a gallon for gas, I mean, I'd much rather have a battery taking me there and my money for the gas, if I had one.
I think that's, go ahead, go ahead.
My, when I consider, you know, how much of an impediment to traffic would it be and everything, in my mind, it wouldn't be any worse than getting behind the garbage truck or a school bus, or, you know, which happens every day anyway.
Bicycle, UBS.
A bicycle, yeah. So I don't think it would have that big of an effect on things in my mind.
Possibly result unlimited maybe to Ren's Road and Bag End.
It would have to be because...
I'm certain everyone in this room is probably, you know, a little Florida road, certain bicycle ward, that little Florida road, and the traffic implications to that. The golf, the result of that, imagine that to be 20, 30 golf carts.
But that was a 35 mile an hour road, and it wouldn't happen, yeah.
Well, I want to make sure that the petition that we received, and I think this is something that we, I would like to hear back from those citizens, is, is the main, if your main thrust is safety, we get it, you know, we'll lower the speed limit. Is the main thrust safety or is it golf carts? And that's, you know, which one is it? Because it's an important question for us to understand as we go forward to studying. Nobody wants to say, you can't do in your neighborhood, this is your neighborhood. I don't think anybody on council wants to say you can't do what you want to do in your neighborhood. But we also have to consider that we have operating marina and probably, I remember the time that we did do the traffic studies, the neighborhood was saying, look at all the traffic flow that we're going to get in our neighborhood when you do this marina project. And, you know, we don't want the marina project because of the increased traffic flow. So are we saying that we want to put golf carts into that mix? And that's, that's a fundamental question of council and what you consider this road to be. Or, you know, I can see certain portions, okay? Is that going to take the lower end closer to the marina and the White House Cove? Okay, well, that's definitely a little bit more isolated down there. Do we do that, but not up at the end of Ren's Road where you're close to Pecosin Avenue, you have all the turning traffic? You know, does that make the two ends of the road, the folks there upset? You know, so it's kind of a major thing to me is, if it's all about safety and speed limit, I don't see anything on here on the petition about, we want to do this because of golf carts. But I don't want to specifically go change that speed limit because everybody believes that as soon as we change that speed limit, they can drive golf carts on the road. That's not the case.
That's a very good point.
And so it's incumbent on us to understand and for the neighborhood to understand what the two questions are, and that's why we put it on here separately. One, speed limit. Got it? Neighborhood wants it to be 25. I don't think anybody's arguing. Get it done. Get the study done. Get it done right and put it upright. Second case is, does that really mean golf carts? And that's, I think, a different question. You have boat trailer traffic. You've got people coming down that road that are not familiar with Pecosin, much less that we have it as a golf cart designated area. So what is the appropriate level of signage to make sure that the residents are safe from the people that are going to the marina? There's, I think, some things to think about longer term before we just start having, after 26 years, we start having four or five little accidents or somebody hurt on a golf cart because we didn't think through it. But there's some roads that I think we can get turned around real quick.
I think the petition is self-explanatory. It says, they'd like to lower the speed limit to 25. It hasn't mentioned anything about golf carts.
Okay. And that's what, that's the way I read it. And that's why we're having two different discussions. Then I, then what we heard was the hearsay and some reports from people that had signed the petition that they could ride a golf cart. And I wanted to make sure that they did it for the right, that they signed it for the reason of safety. If that's the only reason, I don't think this is a long program at all. And we don't even have to address the golf carts.
I don't think that's part of lowering the speed limit. I think when we get the golf cart thing straightened out, as we start looking at streets, then we can decide Ren's Road's appropriate. And if there have been no accidents in the last 26 months, I can tell you, they've been going up and down Ren's Road. So I don't think you're going to create a horrendous traffic accident problem. They're already there.
What are? The golf carts?
Yeah.
Well, we know that.
You reported them as a good citizen to the police.
Cliff's got records.
Happened to me too. And I don't like setting our staff up to take a blind eye to the law either. So let's do it and do it right. All right. Anything else, council, tonight? We've got a meeting in about three minutes with a lot of public hearings, and we've challenged Randy to get this done in 20 minutes or less.
We can, staff can do it. On probation.
All right. Thanks, y'all.